I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the regular council meeting of the city of Newport Beach for February 14th. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.[18.32][18.32](laughter) And I can think of maybe a few better places to be on a Valentine's Day, and so could my wife, but anyhow, I hope everybody has been very nice to their loved ones today. City Clerk?
The record will show that all members are present.
Thank you. We don't have anything to report from closed session. Is that correct, City Attorney? All right. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Daigle. And afterwards, please remain standing because Dr. John Huffman from St. Andrews Church will give the invocation.
(inaudible). Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious Lord, we thank you for the privilege of doing the work of this wonderful community. We thank you for Keith Curry, the new member of this council. We thank you for those who worked so hard to maintain and improve the quality of the life of Newport Beach. We are awestruck at the complexity of the issues, the controversies that come from time to time, the plethora of items on the agenda as the years go in and out, but we thank you that there are those who will take an evening like this, even Valentine's evening, to be here to do our work for us. Give wisdom, we pray. And also minister to the deepest needs of council persons and staff members who have to put aside their personal agendas as they step into this room this evening to carry on the work of this community. Those that have heavy hearts, those that are dealing with issues that no one else knows about, we pray that you will minister in depth to them even as they serve us. This we pray in the name of the Creator, Sustainer God, who some know as the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, who some of us worship as Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Huffman. I don't have any presentations on our list tonight. City Clerk?
City Council announcements or matters which council members would like to place on the future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Let me just start off this with, our chief, Bob McDonald, received a rather prestigious award from the Police Chiefs Association a week or so ago. It was the Malloy Award, and it's the highest award that the state Police Chiefs Association can give out to an individual in the law enforcement. And we're all very proud that Bob McDonald is our police chief and has been serving us for 12 years, and he has 31 years of experience, and he's done many things within the county and the state. And I'd just like to congratulate him publicly for his award and feel that we're really lucky to have him, and we're going to be sorry to see him retire in about a year, I guess it is. Mr. Nichols, do you have anything?
I believe it's arranged for the next agenda, but I was asking that maybe we would have a little more insight from our harbor rep on the harbor, the lower harbor particularly, and the state of it, and also means that we might use to get it more into a harbor and less into an estuary for ill grass.
Thank you. Councilmember Daigle?
No announcements.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Rosansky?
Yes, I have several. Number one, our first meeting of the Newport City Hall Site Selection Committee was yesterday. I was asked by the chairman Larry Tucker to put it out to the public that if you have any sites in town which you think would be suitable for the new city hall, to please contact either Larry through, you probably can call the city manager's office at 644-3000, because we were trying to locate any and all sites in town that would be suitable for the new city hall location, approximately three to four acres is what we're looking for in general. Number two, coming up, I don't, I was given a date, but I don't think it's the exact right date because it's, I don't think it's right, but in any event Relay for Life is coming up. I believe it'll be in May. The Relay for Life folks are looking to form committees of interested persons who want to sponsor teams for the Relay for Life, so certainly if you're interested in participating in this event, they have a goal, I believe, of $160,000. I think they raised $130,000 last year, so we definitely can use some more teams. I know they switched to the larger field last year, and so there was plenty of room for anybody who wants to get involved with this great event. Mayor and councilmember Bromberg used to head this up before. I'll be heading up the council critter team, and so anybody out there who would like to join our team, we'd love to have you. And that goes for staff as well. You can defect from that other team that the city sponsors. But, so we do look forward to a great event. The event has been changed. It's not a Friday to Saturday event, it'll be a Saturday to Sunday event, so hopefully that'll allow for more participation. And I'm expecting all of you folks up here to be council critters again this year. And lastly, I'd like a report from the city staff on an issue that several residents have contacted me about. On our beach right now, we're apparently not allowed to have our dogs on the beach between the hours of, I think it's eight and five o'clock year-round. It seems like there's a lot of interest in opening up the beaches for dog walking between major holidays of Labor Day and Memorial Day when beach use declines significantly, and because of daylight savings time and things like that, the hour, you know, gets darker later, people are not home, and they like to, you know, take their dogs out for a little exercise. Certainly, it's not, we're not talking about a dog park or, you know, dog beach like they have in Huntington Beach, but just to be able to walk your dog on the leash. So I would like a report from the city staff on the possibility of doing that, and if there are any significant factors that would mitigate against doing that. Thank you.
Mr. Selig?
I have nothing.
And Mr. Curry?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you thought you'd probably get by without a centennial moment tonight, but you're wrong. We have 199 days until September 1st, 2006, of which the city will be 100 years old. And a couple of items tonight. February 14th, 1928, city engineer Cressley presented the plans for the Goldenrod Foot Bridge. And that bridge, those plans were approved, and the bridge was completed within that same year, 1928. In 1949, they changed the name of Coast Boulevard and Central Boulevard to Newport Boulevard and Balboa Boulevard. So the street out here used to be Coast Boulevard, and down a little bit farther, it was Central. And also, that same meeting, it's kind of interesting, in '49, they had proposed a city charter, and it was taken to the vote of the people, and it failed by 150 votes. They got 1,100 in favor and 1,300 against. It's interesting that the charter then did go ahead, and it was passed in 1950, a year later. So, and you'll be hearing more about that at the mayor's dinner, so that that's your centennial moment for tonight. City Clerk?
Notice to the public, all matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 6, and supplemental items 18 and 19 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. I'll poll the council first. Councilmember Curry, do you have any items you'd like to remove from the consent calendar?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Councilmember Selig?
I have nothing.
Mayor Pro Tim Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Ridgeway?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Daigle?
No items to pull, but I did want to comment on item number six, that we are moving forward, and I see a member of the San Ana Heights community here this evening with an accepting title for our park parcels in San Ana Heights, so looking forward to our park up there. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
I would still like to pull three and have a discussion of what that ordinance is and the responsibilities.
Okay, we'll pull item three. Is there a motion? Oh, excuse me. Is there anybody on the staff that needs to pull any items?
None.
Anybody from the public wish to pull any items? All right. Do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar items 1 through 6, except for item number 3.
And the supplemental items 18 and 19?
And the supplemental items, thank you.
Second. All of, please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven is public hearings, and the first public hearing that we have tonight is on the commercial activity and regulations of the Newport Harbor Municipal Code, chapters 5.18 and 17.41. Is there a staff report? Mr. Mayor, there is. Revenue Manager Glenn Everoade will provide it.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to bring this ordinance that we've been three and a half years in the development on before you, hopefully for adoption tonight. It was introduced at the last council meeting unanimously, I'm glad to report. This ordinance, just to recap some of the highlights, will incorporate two existing ordinances that regulate commercial conduct on Newport Harbor. Those two ordinances, currently administered by Revenue Division and Harbor Resources Division, will centralize the responsibility for regulation of commercial conduct with the Harbor Resources Division. It will take permits that are issued on a per-event basis for charter vessels and provide them an opportunity to apply for a permit and receive up to one year's authorization to operate charter vessel operations. It'll take permits that are currently with an evergreen permit and put them under a one-year maximum renewal process. Fees that we're proposing for you have been an estimate on what we think the process will be based on the current process that we've had in place. There's a range that we've established based on the hourly rates fully loaded for Harbor Resources Manager, and this action tonight will not only, if council elects to adopt the ordinance, it will, we're asking council to adopt a amendment to the fee schedule to update it, to reflect the fees for the new ordinance, and repeal the fees associated with the two existing ordinances, chapter 518 and chapter 1741. Without any additional explanation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions of Mr. Everoade?
I have one.
Mr. Nichols?
This seems to have the same fee for a boat coming in here and running one single excursion as a boat that would stay in the harbor for a year and do that, right?
Councilman Nichols, the fees are based on the hourly rate of the individuals at the Harbor Resources Department will apply to the review of those kind of permits. So if a charter vessel operator, in the example that you cite, proposes an operation that will only be here for one day, the reviews that will occur with that kind of operation will be similar, if not the same, as those reviews that would be applied to that same charter operation that would propose to operate here for 365 days. For example, inspecting the dock.
Maybe I forgot another thing, and that is, you have a separate schedule for individual passengers?
There's a Marine Charter Passenger Tax that's applicable to-
Each individual that takes the tour, then?
That's correct, yes. That's collected by these, the people that would be subject to the permits that we're proposing council adopting the ordinance tonight.
Okay, so then there are two sides of this, if you will. One is to make sure the charter is adequate and safety-wise and so forth, and the second is per-charge for some of the facilities that we're providing.
That's correct. There's a regulatory fee that's associated with the ordinance this evening, and then there's a tax that's applied to the passengers that those charter operations provide service to.
My only other question is, have you had any reports back from charter operators to yourself? I mean, have they had, are they, this seems okay to them?
I think, I don't see many charter operators here this evening. We spent three and a half years building consensus through the Marine Division with Chamber of Commerce, and I think the reason that we've enjoyed the essential non-response that we've had with the two council meetings tonight is because I think we've done a good job building consensus for that industry, and we're committed to working with that industry, making sure that this new ordinance does work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other council members have questions? I'd like to open this to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, bring it back to the council for a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
The next item is the Bayside Residential Plan Community Development. Is there a very brief staff report on this?
There is. Contract planner Dave Leepo will provide it, and Dave, I don't think you need to highlight the same things that you did the last meeting, just a very brief overview.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we've gone through and worked with the applicant. It's your direction last time to respond to your concerns about providing appropriate public access, reasonable public access to the waterfront in conjunction with the development of the 17-unit subdivision. Since that time, we have revised conditions of approval, and certainly you see in the report that the applicant is now providing, proposing to provide a partially on land, partially cantilevered over the water, eight-foot walkway on top of the existing bulkhead to satisfy their reasonable access requirements. That's instead of continuing access across the floating dockway as there is now. Conditions of approval have been included for you that accommodate that walkway. Several other conditions that we've got for you to be passed out, there were some last-minute revisions, relate to other requests primarily among those. The setbacks from the North Channel of Newport Bay along the residential lots 3 through 9 would be reduced three feet to accommodate that part of the on-land easement for the walkway. There is also a request to allow for raising the building pads as much as 18 inches. We've included that information with you. Part of that is to provide the sewer, or the necessary fall for the sanitary sewer. Part of it is to provide a little bit of privacy by raising the building pads above the adjoining public walkways. We've also provided you with a change in the Table 1 for the planned community text, and this again shows you the reduced lot sizes that are consequent of taking that additional three feet width for the on-land part of the public access. That public access would become part of Lot B, that's a condition of approval here. Condition number 21, if you look on Agenda item number J8, again, that stipulates that using the pad elevation zone on the tentative track map when the homes are constructed, the ultimate building heights would be measured from the raised building pads.
What's the difference between the condition and the alternative?
The condition is what is in the staff report conditions that you received last week.
And you're now recommending that the alternative be approved?
The alternative, if that's the direction of the city council, we could do it. Again, originally, we understood that there was a need to raise the 18 inches strictly as a function of the sanitary sewer flow. We did some checking, found out that was probably more than was required. We spoke with the applicant. Applicant's representative indicated that part of the 18 inches was for the sanitary flow, part of it was just, again, to raise the building pads to give the residents more privacy from the adjoining walkways.
I guess my question is, you've given us a condition 21 and an alternative. Which one are you recommending that we approve?
I suggest, recommend that you approve the alternative, because again, as far as height limitation, surrounding buildings, co-condominiums are higher than the 28 feet that's going to be proposed. Promontory Point across the street, you've got no single families immediately to the west, so in terms of the context of the site, raising as much as 18 inches should not be a problem.
Okay. Condition 33 and 35, you're going to go through those two?
Sure. Condition number 33, if you remember, there was discussion about how much setback needed to be provided between the back of the public sidewalk on Bayside Drive and the new wall that's going to be reconstructed at that property frontage. We found out in checking with the engineer that the property line and the right-of-way line vary in terms of their distance from the back of the existing sidewalk. In some places, the property line is as little as two feet behind the public sidewalk, and in other places, as much as four feet behind the public sidewalk. So based on the direction we understood from the city council to keep that a uniform six-feet width of landscaping behind the public sidewalk, we've proposed this condition. So the private lot will vary in width to maintain a consistent six-foot landscape setback all along the sidewalk.
And that's what the alternative for addition?
That's what the alternative does, yes, and we think that makes sense.
Condition 35?
Condition number 35, this is the important one. In talking with the applicant, and I think we talked a little bit about last time in terms of improvements over the water, projecting over the water, in any event, the Coastal Commission's going to have to give their approval. The applicant said, what happens if we go ahead to the Coastal Commission with a plan to construct the walkway partially on land and partially cantilevered, and the Coastal Commission said, no, we want it on the water. You know, what do you do then? The way this condition is worded, it would leave it to the applicant and the Coastal Commission to determine what happened at that point. It would not come back to the city council or Planning Commission for further consideration of what the options were. That's what this alternative does. That one, again, we have to defer to the city council on your direction. If that would happen, and the Coastal Commission would say, we don't like this combination on-land cantilevered walkway, put it on the dockway, does the city council want to have the option of this plan coming back to you for consideration of another alternative, or no? The alternative as written would not come back to you. You would not see it again.
But if the condition 35, we would see it again?
Well, I would suggest that if you would want to see it again in that event, then we would change the condition accordingly to make an affirmative statement that you want to see it again.
Okay, so really, the condition and the alternative really say essentially the same thing, and we wouldn't, if we adopted either one of them, we would come, it would not come back to us, the way it's written today.
I wouldn't say it's that cut and dry. If you wanted to come back to you, I would recommend that we change the condition as it stays now, as it's stated now, and say it comes back to the council.
Okay.
What, would it be all on land? I'm sorry. I mean, would you expect the Coastal Commission to say it shall be all on water or all on land, or do you have a, I mean, it could take either turn, right?
Mr. Mayor, yeah. My understanding is that the Coastal Commission is not likely to opt for something different from what the council approves, but we have no guarantee of that. So yes, it could come back and say, the walkway on the water provides better access, walkway entirely on land is better access.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'm not sure. So basically, you would prefer then that that come back? I doubt it. You just want to decide it with them?
That's up to us to determine whether, whether it's, that's not something that he's recommending one way or the other.
Yes.
Councilmember Selig, did you have something that you wanted to say on this before we get started?
As far as that condition with the Coastal Commission, I think that's a reasonable way toward that condition. I don't think there's a high likelihood that the Coastal Commission's going to overturn our determination on this, and so I'm okay with that part of the condition. And as far as the other conditions, the alternative conditions, I'm fine with those, and I think the applicant's done an outstanding job in making modifications to the project, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation with the alternative conditions 21, 33, and 35.
Mr. Mayor, I know we're going to have to open this to the public, but at least, I will second that motion as long as I hear from the applicant that that is acceptable.
That's fine, thank you. I'd now like to take public testimony on this. Is the applicant, can you come down and let us know whether or not you agree to these various different conditions and changes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Carol McDermott, and I am representing the applicant, and Happy Valentine's Day to all of you and to my husband who's at home. And I just would like to say that those conditions would be perfectly acceptable to us. The only thing that I want to make sure is clarified by Mr. Leepo is that Table number one in the planned community regulations has been revised to reflect both the revised lot sizes and the revised setbacks, and that that would need, I believe, to be included in the motion. Otherwise, we'd be perfectly happy and would appreciate your support this evening.
Okay, so we need to add to the motion the-
That's part of my second.
Okay, good. And the staff members in the front row shook their heads yes. Is there anybody else that wished to comment on this from the public? I closed the public hearing. Is there any discussion by the council members on this item?
I'd just quickly like to say I'm glad that the applicant and Councilman Selig and the staff were able to work this out. I think it's going to be a great project, and it seems like it's a win for everybody, as well as the public with the access.
Anybody else wish to comment?
Thank you, Ed. I think you did a really outstanding job.
Good job, Ed.
All right. I walked in the dock too with Ed.[1574.13][1574.13](laughter) Okay, let's vote on this item.
Motion carries.
The next item is, have to excuse me, this was, this particular item was the thickest item in our agenda. It has about 350 pages to it, and it takes a while to turn our pages. The next item is item number nine, which is the General Plan Amendment number 2006-001, which is the Local Coastal Plan Amendment, 2006-001, and the code amendment of the same for Caltrans West property at 4850 West Coast Highway. Is there a staff report?
I will be very brief. This item was initiated by the city council a few weeks ago, and the various amendments were considered by the Planning Commission last Thursday and recommended unanimously for approval. As you know, the city is, has been pursuing the, some form of acquisition of the Caltrans West property for quite some time, and these general plan, LCP, and zoning actions would serve to support the use of the property for open space active. And with that, I'll close my comments unless council has questions.
Is there any other questions from the city council on this item?
I don't have a question. Well, actually, I do. Wasn't there an addition by the Planning Commission to make a reference to the legislation that's pending, or that has been passed, excuse me, that-
Yes, in their resolution, and we have brought that language forward in your resolution as well.
Okay, and I'd like to make that clear, because it isn't real clear in the staff report, and it's not really in the staff report at all, but I think one of the major motivators for us to change the designations on this property and the zoning on this property is, is that there is legislation in place now that has been passed by the state legislature that authorizes that this property be transferred from Caltrans to the State Parks Department for park uses, and that our actions here tonight are solely, are motivated by that legislation and our intent to pay the money that we already have offered to the state, the $1,380,000 to acquire that property or to lease that property from the State Parks Department once it's transferred to them from Caltrans. And so that this action tonight is in furtherance of that, because I think that the report, it doesn't really make that clear, and I just want to put it on the record that that is our primary motivation here tonight. And I look forward to that property being developed as a park in West Newport.
Is there a motion in there?
I believe there is a motion. There's a motion to approve the item as recommended.
Same. Good, I think that, any further counsel comments? I'd like to open this up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that wished to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public portion of this. Is there a council discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries.
City Clerk?
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
I'm from San Ana Heights.
Robert Hanley. I'm from San Ana Heights, Western Division. I'm here obliquely to talk about the annexation.
Excuse me, we're going to discuss that item. This isn't, doesn't relate to the annexation?
No.
Good, excuse me.
I'm here basically to do a eulogy, so to speak. And it's of one of your own. Six years ago, we formed a group in western San Ana Heights to look after our interests, and consequently, we are here tonight to achieve those interests. One of the individuals that was head of the group at the time, so to speak, whose home we met at, was one of your own. His name was Ed Hall. Ed passed away the eighth of December from illnesses and injuries that he had achieved. He was one of your fire captains for twenty-one years. I happen to have some pictures of him in his uniform. Ed was an unusual gentleman in that he had a strong drive to serve. He served in the service in World War II and arrived at a master sergeancy at the age of nineteen in what he did. He served this city in many ways besides being a fire captain. He was injured, and he was retired because of his injury. He also had a strong tendency for leadership, sometimes in conflict with other people, but he was fairly good at it. I think it behooves us to give him credit where credit is due, and we wouldn't be, as a group, we would not be here tonight if it wasn't for Ed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hanley. Is anybody else that wishes to make a public comment on a non-agenda item?
Happy Valentine's Day. My name is Susan McFadden, and I live at four 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 Prospect Street. And next door to me, I have renters that live at four four eight Prospect Street. And they have a dog that is very annoying, and it really is a nuisance to my peace and enjoyment of my property. We've gone through the system of animal control, and we had an officer to help us. It was very nice and very supportive. We also tried mediation, and that did not reap any results whatsoever. The dog is still barking for hours. And I just am coming here because the system isn't working for us as far as getting rid of this nuisance. And I just wondered about the possibility of finding people that have dogs that are a nuisance because it seems like it would be a win-win-win for the city because we'd bring a lot of money into the coffers. That's just a thought. But anyway, I'm just here because the system failed for me, and I have this annoyance, and I work, and I listen to the dog for hours on end, and it barks at the wind. I mean, it just barks and barks and barks every time anyone walks by, any movement, any noise.
My name's Dennis Perret. I also live at four four four...
What was your name again? What was your name again, please?
Dennis Perret.
Dennis Perret, thank you.
Yes. I also live at four 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 Prospect Street, and I back Susan McFadden in the fact that the dog is really very annoying. I conduct my business out of this, out of our home, anyway, as well. And trying to make phone calls to customers in the evening with this dog barking is really very annoying.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. McFadden, why don't you take my card and contact me maybe tomorrow, the next day, and we'll see what we can do to help you.
Does anybody else have a public comment on a non-agenda item? Then I will close public comments, and we will go forward to oral reports from the city council on committee activities. The ad hoc committee for the general plan update, GPUC. Mr. Sellig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have a meeting on the twenty-seventh of February at four o'clock in the library main auditorium, and we'll be discussing various technical issues regarding the general plan update, including the land use map and perhaps some of the tables and things of that nature. So, that'll be our next meeting.
Good, thank you. The local coastal program certification committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As most people know, we last met in December, I believe, in the beginning of December, to discuss moving forward with the implementation plan. The Patrick Alfred, who is the advanced planner here, asked us, requested that our committee not convene until he completed the comprehensive report, the implementation plan, that is, as the land use element has already been approved by coastal commission. And I believe, Patty, did it get certified by the coastal commission? So, it is now certified after our action. So, our land use component is certified. For those of you who are on the committee, don't shudder, but Patrick has finished the IP draft document. It is over five hundred pages. And I asked Patrick to send a memo to each one of you, and we're going to try to convene the committee after two weeks. So, you're going to have two weeks. That draft document should be in your hands tomorrow. So, you have two weeks to read five hundred pages, and the public will...that will be a noticed Brown Act committee. Anybody who wants to pick up a copy of the implementation plan is welcome to pick it up or read it on the website or get it at the library. And we will be plowing through that soon. But in about two weeks is when we're going to move forward. So, not only do we have a general plan, which is thousands of pages, and we have the local coastal implementation plan, which is five hundred pages.
Are you paying Patrick by the word? Is that how we're paying?
Pounds.
By the pound?
Yeah.
Thank you. The Mariners' Joint Use, excuse me, the Newport Coast Advisory Committee. Mr. Curry, you probably haven't had your first meeting yet.
I haven't, Mr. Mayor. I understand the next meeting's going to be on the thirteenth of March, and we'll be looking forward to a meeting with the committee at that time.
Mr. Nichols, do you have anything that you need to say about that?
Not occurs.
Okay.
A target.
And a bulletproof vest.
Now, wait a second. They're a very good group. This'd be nice now. Mariners' Joint Use Library Ad Hoc Steering Committee, I'd like to announce the formal dedication day for that is April twentieth. It'll be eleven o'clock in the morning, and it's a Thursday. We're going to get together on the athletic field behind the library with all the students of Mariner School and, I guess, have a few speechmakers out there and formally dedicate the school and allow the students to walk through for the first time. My wife and I walked through it today, and it's really coming together. The carpet is down, the shelves are in, and no books yet, but we're getting close. It's going to be a wonderful library, and we're...I'm looking forward to being able to use it.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment. Actually, if people are driving by, they can see it on Irvine Avenue. The lights are on at night, and actually, it will be open before the actual dedication itself, but soon. No? April twenty-second is actually, that's when it'll be open.
That's right.
Okay. Boy, it looks finished to me. Just got to move the donuts and coffee in.
Now, wait a minute. Okay, the next item is the Centennial Committee. We had a meeting last week, and we're looking for a few more members of that committee, which we'll be bringing back to you later on. But the one thing that I enjoy doing is, this last week at Mariner School again, the Newport Harbor High School Centennial Play Group gave a historical play to the students at Mariner School. It lasted about twenty minutes, and it had a lot of facts, not a whole lot, but it had some really facts, interesting facts related to the history of Newport. And the kids from kindergarten up to fourth grade watched it and had a wonderful time. It was a situation where they got to make special noises. Whenever people said trains, they would go choo-choo. And surfing, they would do a surfing, let's see, hang loose or whatever you do, as the history of Newport evolved in front of them. The high school students did a wonderful job. It was put together by a McCall McGregor, and her supervisor at the high school is Gail Brower Nedler. And they did just a wonderful job, and we're happy to have them out there, planning on going to all the elementary schools in the district.
If I may tag on to your report on the Centennial Committee, more on a business note, the centennial budget is still about three hundred thousand dollars underfunded. And so, we are still looking for sponsorship, either corporate sponsorship or individual contributions, to help close the gap on that. There's some pretty good opportunities to become involved with the centennial, working with the committee on trying to do a little bit more of the fundraising aspect of it. So, anybody out there that would like to hear about those opportunities, please...do we have a number for that, or a centennial number?
I don't remember the number.
Well, you can get in touch with us through the city manager's office at six four four three thousand. They'll be more than happy to put you in touch with either myself or Don or some of the other committee members. And hopefully, we can close the gap, you know, by the time October eighth. Is that our...
Right.
October eighth rolls around, final event, peer-to-peer. Thank you.
All right. The next item is the Marina Park, and that's Mr. Ridgeway. No, actually, that's me.
Well, let me report on mine. The Ad Hoc Marina Park Advisory Committee for the, at this point in time, as of this week, the Marina Park Mobile Home Park Relocation Impact Report that was discussed at the advisory committee has been disseminated to everybody in the park and to the public at large. And basically, it is a precursor to us reviewing whether we want to close the park. But this is a, it's an impact report looking at the closure of the park in the future if we so choose.
And we will be bringing the Marina Park issue, planning issue, back to council study session. I think it's the last meeting in March, if I remember correctly. The next item is other committee activities. We've had the site committee that we just recently appointed, I think, has met. Would you want to make a report on that?
Sure. Yesterday, we had the first meeting of our city hall site review committee. I was quite impressed with the caliber of the citizen members of the committee. They come from various, various parts of the real estate industry, business interests, as well as other interests in the city. They seem very knowledgeable. I think we're going to get a lot of good advice out of them. We are soliciting, we have a list of, I have it right here, about fourteen different sites that we're considering throughout the city. We're certainly looking for any other sites that people may feel would be suitable for a new city hall. We're probably looking for at least three to four acres. So, but it could have a building on it that we could tear down. It could be vacant land. You know, there's nothing that's off the table. I'll just read you a couple of the sites here quickly that we're looking at. Talking about MacArthur and Avocado, just north of San Miguel, there's a city-owned piece of property there. The art museum site and the old library site in Newport Center. Newport Beach Country Club parking lot. Banning Ranch is in there as a potential site. The Dunes, a former Edler Building at Campus and Dove. So, the sites are spread all around the city. That's just a partial listing, but if you have any others, we'd be more than happy to entertain those. Our next meeting will be March sixth. It is a public meeting, and we encourage the public to come down and attend. And if I might just add, I don't think the finance review committee has met yet. I think their first meeting is February twenty-seventh. That'll be a meeting in this chamber here, the council chamber. That is also open to the public, and we encourage the public to attend that and have their chance to have input in that process. Thank you.
Thank you. The Finance, Facilities Finance Committee has not met yet, so there wouldn't be a report on that one. Is there anybody else that has any other committees or activities that they have been interested in reporting? Okay, let's go on to the next item, which is the planning commission agenda.
Excuse me. Ms. Mayor, members of the council, the planning commission met last Thursday. There were four items on their agenda. The first one was an appeal of the planning director's approval of an independent massage establishment within an office building up in Newport Center. This item was really not discussed by the commission because the appellant didn't show up for the hearing, and so, they took their action to uphold the decision of the planning director. The second item was the one you just considered, was the recommendation on the Caltrans West rezoning, so I don't think I need to go further there. The third item was an item that had been requested by the commission subsequent to their consideration of the Mariners Gateway Project. They had requested some additional information as to the benefits that might accrue from a further widening of Coast Highway to the west of that project. The public works department actually hired RBF Consulting and did a rather extensive analysis of the efficacy of taking the third westbound through lane past the McDonald's property. And the recommendation was that there was not a lot of benefit to do that. And so, the planning commission decided to table the item and not make a recommendation to you in terms of that improvement. The item that took nearly the whole night, in fact, all the way to, I think it was eleven o'clock, was the third consideration of Sober Living by the Sea, which is an operation that is over here in the Cannery Village where the recovery homes do not have the kind of meetings that other recovery homes in town have, but they have focused them in assembly spaces within the commercial area in Cannery Village. This item has been very controversial in the neighborhood. During this third consideration, staff did an extensive new analysis as to the actual parking requirements based on building code limits of occupants throughout the building. The project does involve the addition of an off-site parking lot to add thirteen employee parking spaces to the operation. And all of the clients are required to attend the facility by riding bicycles or utilizing van transportation. One of our planning commissioners did have to step down related to this consideration, and after extensive public testimony on both sides of the issue, the commission was unable to come to a full decision. But the motion for approve, for approval failed on a three-to-three motion. Just for your information, the applicant submitted an appeal of that decision, which is a deemed denied action just this morning, and they have requested that the council's consideration would occur on April the eleventh. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Thank you. Does the council, any questions of Ms. Temple?
Just quickly, if you can sum it up in two sentences, why it was, or maybe the public works director can, why extension of that third lane was not deemed to be a good idea on Coast Highway?
The westbound movement on Coast Highway's principal constraint is the intersection at Riverside and Coast Highway. Steve, you might want to expand on that. And just by adding the lanes, you still have the problem at Riverside, which is the principal problem in that direction.
And what Patty is saying is correct, that what happens is that alone, on its own, it doesn't really...
it doesn't really provide you much improvement. It really needs to be included in the context of a bigger project, which would improve that intersection. Because all you're doing is moving the bottleneck from one area of town to another. You're really not solving the issue.
So, you're saying we need three lanes all the way to the Arches Bridge, is that?
Well, you need to improve the intersection, because that's the real focus of where the problems occur. It's not necessarily the capacity in the lanes. It doesn't, it's not going to do anything for you, because you still have this major obstacle in the system.
And are we doing anything to achieve that goal?
We're working on those kinds of things.
Well, I could.
Let's hope so.
Yeah, I could expand on the Public Works Director's comment, as there has been an improvement identified at Riverside and Coast Highway, extremely controversial in up in Don's neighborhood, so I think it will take a lot of work to get the community of Newport Heights comfortable with the, what we feel is the best way to solve that intersection issues.
I look forward to your presentation in the future on that.
Question?
Steve will, Steve will be able to handle it, I'm sure.
Councilmember Nichols?
Patty, just a question on that. If the intersection improvement goes through, would this third lane then be necessary to get the kind of traffic flow we need?
Well, maybe.
That's really, this really isn't a discussion item that, right now, but I think.
It would, it would basically involve the completion of the master plan improvement on Coast Highway.
Yeah, the Coast, the Coast Highway is master planned for three lanes in each direction.
So, we do ultimately need that if we get this straightened out. How does that affect what we're doing?
Well, I guess the bottom line is, is that the third lane is being constructed across the property that is before us for development, the property next door is not before us, and it's, would be, if the extension were to occur, it would be at city expense, and we want to put together a capital improvement project to do that work now, as opposed to when it could be combined with the rest of the work. Is that essentially it?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions in the Planning Commission? Thank you. Then our next item is Item 11. Is there a report from the staff?
Mr. Mayor, I'm bringing back two resolutions for the committees that have been talked about a little tonight. The City Hall Site Review Committee, which met yesterday for the first time, and then the Facilities Financing Review Committee meeting, which will meet on the 27th. So, all of the particulars of the two resolutions that would be establishing these committees are the same as council reviewed and approved in December, with a few exceptions. The number of committee members was changed based upon a discussion at the City Council to allow you to choose anywhere from seven to eleven. Previously, we had thought that eleven was going to be the number, and in fact, that was the number of appointees the council did appoint to those committees. But just to give you flexibility, if you want to change it back to strictly the number eleven, that would be all right also. Again, based upon the discussion of the mayor at the last council meeting, then there was a desire to appoint three council members to be ad hoc members, so that is included with the recommendation. And then, there needs to be a change, because council did say that they would like the written report, and oral reports to be done by May the first. So, with those changes, I think they are all, that had been previously discussed in previous meetings.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the council that wishes to comment on these items?
Mr. Mayor, I would move the resolutions.
I did have a couple of questions based on dialogue that I had with the community members and members of the committee.
Councilmember Daigle, excuse me, just one second. Is there a second to that motion before Councilmember Daigle?
I'll second.
Excuse me, okay. Councilmember Daigle?
Based on communication that I had with the community members of the committee, my first question is, is the assessment criteria also going to apply to the existing city hall site? Are we exempting that from our study, or the committee's study?
It's in the study. It is in the study. It was the last site that was mentioned.
Okay. And then, the second question I have is that, in terms of what's coming up to the City Council, will it be an assessment of a series of sites, or are they making a recommendation on this is the best site?
My understanding is they will not prioritize, they will just present sites in the objective, and then it will be up to council to analyze from that point.
Okay. Thank you for those clarifications.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that would like to discuss on this, discuss this item? Seeing no one, is there a council discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Item number 12 is the council selection of replacements for Don Dallas and Keith Curry. I guess we did it to ourselves and appointed Keith to the City Council, and saw that he lost his spot on the Finance Committee. And Don Dallas has indicated that he is changing his employment and had to resign from the committee, so that we have now nine members of the Finance Facilities Committee. And I guess it's up to the council, do we wish to appoint any new members, or leave it at nine?
In my opinion, nine is adequate at this point in time.
What's, does anybody else in the council have any comments?
I would say nine is adequate as well. We said seven to eleven, and I think we still have a pretty good cushion.
Yeah. I would concur, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Let's, we'll vote on that separate, let's see. There's the chairperson. Okay, we have to also reconsider who the chairperson would be, but do we have any discussion on who we would like to appoint as the chairperson out of the list of nine?
Is, well, last time we did it by ballot, I assume we're just going to do away with that, or what's the process here?
It's up to you if somebody wants to nominate someone, and you can vote on it, or?
Well, I'll nominate Steve Freitz. I think he got the most votes last time, it seemed like it was pretty well split between him and Keith, and.
I might have heard a vote.
Good enough for Keith, he's good enough for me.
I'll second that.
There you go.
All right. Let's, council vote on that? A public comment on this particular chairman? None?
Mr. Freitz is the new chairman.
Okay, now we need to vote on leaving the committee at nine.
I'll move that we leave the committee as established with the current members of it.
Second.
Has any public comment on that? None? Vote, please.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have a committee of nine with the, Steve Freitz is the chairman. Pardon? Oh, excuse me, there was, on that particular instance, the city, the mayor is supposed to appoint the three council members on that item, and I had appointed council members Selich, Rozansky, and Ridgway to the Site Committee, and the Finance Committee had originally appointed Councilmember Daigle. However, she has graciously declined, and will, I'm going to appoint Keith Curry, so that committee will have Keith Curry, myself, and Councilmember Nichols. Do we need a motion on that, attorney?
So move.
Second. Let's vote. Okay.
Motion carries.
The next item is a proposed modifications to the City Manager's employment agreement. A committee of myself, Councilmember Selich, and Councilmember Rozansky met with the City Manager in discussing his contract, and we are recommending that his contract be a two-year contract with, with a, which includes a five, well, let me read the four items. It'll be a two-year contract. We will establish an annual base salary, which includes a 5% increase, and that goes to $195,977 effective January 7th, until the period of, first payroll period in 2007, at which time the manager's annual base salary would be increased by 4%. The effect, effective January of 2006, the manager would also be provided with a car allowance of $450 a month. And item four, the major items in the agreement, is that the City Manager's administrative leave time would be provided, and would be increased from 10 to 15 days per year. We feel that the manager has done an outstanding job in juggling a zillion balls without dropping any. Maybe he might let one bounce every now and then, but, at any rate, he's, I think that we, on the committee, felt that this was a, an appropriate contract.
Mr. Mayor, one comment. First of all, well, I will make a motion for approval. Secondly, I'd like to make a comment to the citizens of the community. We found that our pay scale for this city manager is 15th out of 34 cities, and I will say, there are a number of cities that are actually paying more, and they have less population and less responsibility. This is a very comprehensive city because of the ocean, the bay, the general plan amendment, City Hall, a number of issues, so this is.
Plus the fact that we're a full-service city.
And we're a full-service city, which means we have our own fire and police, so it's a very.
And utilities.
And utilities. So anyhow, if everybody out there is, I'm going, wow, this guy's making a lot of money. I want to tell you for the stress level that, that he suffers from, in my opinion, he's probably not paid enough, but anyhow, I will make the motion.
And I'll second the motion.
Fine. Is there any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Is there, council, have any comments to make?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could, first of all, I have the highest regard for the City Manager and the job that's being done here in Newport Beach, there's no way I'd reflect on that. I've discussed this with the City Manager. In light of my relative newness to the City Council and having not participated in the evaluation, I think it's appropriate for me to abstain on this, but again, that does not in any way reflect my view of how well we are, in fact, managed.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
With Councilmember Curry abstaining, the motion carries.
I think that we may have the next item, which we have one or two people here that are interested in. The city clerk, would you like to read this item?
Item number 14 is the resolution of application to reorganize territory known, known as West Santa Ana Heights, the Emerson Churchill tract, and the Corporate Yard fueling parcel.
Thank you. Councilmember Ridgway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to recuse myself. As most people know, I own property in the proposed application for reorganization, and so I will recuse myself on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridgway. Is there a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, we will have a staff report, and Dave Kiff will provide it. Before he does, I would just like to say that staff really considers this annexation of particular importance to the city, and I think something that reflects that is looking at the top priorities for this year, which staff proposed and council accepted. Our number one priority was the spheres issues, which does include the annexation, which would translate into them taking over the redevelopment agency. Priority number nine is the community centers, the YMCA Center in Santa Ana Heights, and also the Newport Coast Center. But again, the redevelopment agency is a key financial mechanism in order for this center in Santa Ana Heights to move forward. And priority number 11 is the Santa Ana Heights Fire Station. It will be going out to bid shortly, probably within a month on that. And again, the financing mechanism is the redevelopment agency, and the formation of that is the next item that comes after the annexation. So I'm just trying to put it in the context that the annexation and the redevelopment agency really go hand in hand, and that's why staff really feels like this is an important issue to bring forward, and the timing is ripe in order to do so. And with that, I'll turn the background staff report, and we also have LAFCO staff in the audience to answer any sphere questions. Turn it over to Dave Kiff.
Thank you, Homer and Mayor and City Council Members. I have a four-slide PowerPoint, so I don't want to scare you with my usual length of PowerPoints. I do, as Homer mentioned, Bob Aldrich is here, Bob's the Assistant Executive Officer of LAFCO, if you have specific LAFCO questions. And just for the folks at home, we'll be asking the council tonight to adopt what's called a resolution of application stating the city's intent to annex territory. I'm going to do a quick primer on boundary changes. I'm going to use a couple of terms, we all will tonight. An annexation literally means adding territory, a detachment means removing territory. We're going to refer mostly to a reorganization, which is a combination of those things. It could include a detachment and an annexation. LAFCO is the Local Agency Formation Commission, that's a state-chartered body in every county that approves boundary changes except for school districts. We'll refer to a sphere of influence, and that's a line that LAFCO draws that indicates the expected final or ultimate boundaries of a city. And finally, we'll also talk about a protest, and a protest is a mechanism in LAFCO law that allows folks, either registered voters or property owners, depending on the type of, of reorganization, to register their opposition to a proposed reorganization. And if less than 25% of the registered voters protest, then it's automatically approved, it doesn't go to an actual election. If between 25 and 50% protest, then it goes to an election. And if more than 50 protest, then the reorganization actually has to stop for a year. A quick reminder of where we've been in, in July of 2003, the city annexed eastern Santa Ana Heights in the Baynalls neighborhood. And as far back as 2002, your council has actually discussed this item that we have tonight. Costa Mesa actually attempted to annex a portion of the area we're going to talk about tonight, West Santa Ana Heights, the Santa Ana Country Club, and the area south of Mesa in the 2001-02 period, and they failed. At that time, LAFCO actually pulled West Santa Ana Heights out of Costa Mesa's application, believing that that territory would easily protest out of the, of the application. They allowed the south of Mesa and Country Club proposal to go forward, and that was protested out in an amount greater than 50%, thus ending that attempt.
Wasn't that over 70%?
Yeah, I'm just sticking with the law, so I think you're right.
I'd like to be clear that it was a significant opposition to being.
Thanks, Councilmember.
Thank you.
The, and actually, the Country Club and the West Santa Ana Heights residents filed independently to be removed from the sphere of influence of Costa Mesa, and as I understand it, the Country Club's request was denied, but West Santa Ana Heights was continued indefinitely, so that's still actually pending before LAFCO. In 2003, LAFCO asked, I think via a letter, the city if it would consider annexing at least portions of that territory, including West Santa Ana Heights and the south of Mesa area. So let's talk about these areas here that, in our, the proposed staff, the staff recommendation proposes an annexation application that would address Area A here, known as West Santa Ana Heights. Area D, and this is a nine parcel tract known as the Emerson tract, and these folks are actually within our sphere of influence today, so that doesn't require literally a reorganization.
The Emerson tract.
Sorry, the Emerson tract, correct.
But not the West Santa Ana Heights tract.
Western Santa Ana Heights is in Costa Mesa's sphere of influence. Emerson is in our sphere of influence. And then, there's also a small parcel, we're calling Area E, or Partial E, it's actually part of our general services yard now, and that's in Costa Mesa. And to make it clean for processing permits associated with that area, we're proposing a detachment from Costa Mesa and an annexation to Newport Beach. So those are the three areas, Area A, D, and E. Just for folks' reference, the Country Club is Area B, and the area that referred to as south of Mesa, meaning this side of Mesa Drive, is Area C. And you can see it has a little U shape there, that's because Costa Mesa itself goes in all the way to University there in the white section. So unless you had questions, that concludes my staff report. Again, the request tonight is that you adopt a resolution asking us to go forward with this.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for you. What do you consider to be, thanks, some of the main reasons for the annexation, why the staff is supporting the annexation of West Santa Ana Heights?
Councilmember Daigle, I think there are a couple of good reasons. One is that West Santa Ana Heights and East Santa Ana Heights do share a lot of community ties, in part, their more rural nature, and they're, they've traditionally been considered themselves part of the same community. Separate from that, the county went ahead and overlaid a redevelopment project area over both communities, both sides of Irvine. So, the funding for capital improvements for both east and west is associated with that project area, so we see. we see, as your council knows, we've talked about forming our own redevelopment agency and helping administer those projects hopefully more quickly than the county does. And we see then that the west side should benefit the same as the east side on that.
Can you comment on the balance of that fund, what you see the fund in the future, and also the eligible uses for that fund?
The redevelopment fund there has about roughly $28 million in fund balance. And the Santa Ana Heights PAC, several members who are present tonight, have proposed a number of projects that would address actually all of those monies, but a lot of them are some really great projects, such as the park that you folks approved, the partial transfer today. There's an equestrian arena, there's a community center, there's a fire station. There's a park on the west side, near Orchard Street, that would all be in that project as well as another big chunk of it is a big undergrounding project on Cypress and Mesa.
And I know the city manager made reference to the spheres agreement. Can you kind of explain, maybe give a thumbnail sketch of how the redevelopment and the annexation fits within that, our airport issues and so on?
I'm not sure that I understood the question. As far as, that's how it fits as far as John Wayne Airport?
In terms of the, maybe you can give a thumbnail sketch of the spheres agreement and...
Sphere issues, I see.
Right.
Okay. There are a couple of spheres issues that come into play. One is trying to deal with the county on John Wayne Airport and trying to prevent any long-term, big physical expansion of that airport. One of the key components is the annexation of West Santa Ana Heights, and then with that annexation, us forming our own redevelopment agency and the county transferring the redevelopment agency basically to us. John Wayne Airport is a part of that redevelopment agency. It is included within the agency boundaries. That doesn't mean that the city would gain jurisdiction over John Wayne Airport or have any say-so in the operations of that. It is just a part of the funding mechanism that spins off property tax. It becomes tax increment that is used for funding projects in that area. So they are really tied very closely together. And the county sees us as being the best stewards, I think, of that money. The East Santa Ana Heights people are in the city right now, so we respond to them with other services. And I think the county just sees that this is a logical extension of that, and that the same projects would be done regardless of who has the redevelopment agency. So the city doing it appears to be like it's going to be fine with the county.
And then just a comment. This proposed action would affect hundreds of families in Santa Ana Heights, and I wanted to thank you, Dave, for all the time that you spend up in the community and our meetings, and also the many meetings with the county. So thank you very much.
Dave, are we doing any code enforcement in the West Santa Ana Heights area?
Mayor Webb, you're right. Your council approved roughly in September of last year an agreement with the county whereby we would step in the county's shoes, and we're doing that now, to do code enforcement using county ordinances in West Santa Ana Heights.
This is just West Santa Ana Heights, though?
That's right. And of course, we're already doing it in East Santa Ana Heights because that's our own community.
Okay. We aren't providing any other services, though, are we?
Nothing beyond mutual aid response for police and fire.
And for those of you, mutual aid is when you turn in a 911 call, it goes to a general switchboard, and the unit that is closest and most available responds, whether it's in the county, Newport, or Costa Mesa.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Rosanti?
Dave, could you comment on the, West Santa Ana Heights are the original, the Area 7, I guess it's called, would include Areas A, B, and C, the yellow or green, I guess it is, blue and...
Purple.
Fuchsia, whatever it is.
That's correct.
Portions. Can you comment on why we are not including the other two areas in our application, or why the staff doesn't deem it advisable to do that?
Well, I think that the most, you're phrasing the question in a negative, why didn't we? And that's certainly appropriate to ask.
Well, certainly, well, let me add to that. Certainly, we've been lobbied hard by the Country Club and the residents south of Mesa to come into the city of Newport Beach. They've, there's been a vote, which we talked about just briefly earlier, and that 70%, more than 70%, said that they did not want to become part of Costa Mesa. And so, you know, I guess I'm receptive to their pleas, but, you know, I understand there's also overriding considerations here or other considerations, and if you would expand on some of those, I think that would enlighten some people.
Dave, if you could let me have a crack.
And in addition, I think we do have a LAFCO representative, and it might be appropriate for him to come up at this point in time and explain some of those considerations as well, and how they view the annexation situation.
From my perspective, I think West Santa Ana Heights is a little different situation as opposed to the Country Club and the area south of Mesa Drive, in that there is the redevelopment agency connection. And when I talked about the top 10 priorities and pulled out three of them, they're really all tied to the annexation of West Santa Ana Heights and then the gaining of the redevelopment agency. So I think it's staff's point of view, certainly mine, that we really need to focus on the discussions that we're having with the county that are based upon the annexation of West Santa Ana Heights, not necessarily the other areas, and then the redevelopment agency coming along with it. That doesn't mean that staff is opposed to the annexation of the other two areas, but we just think that it's going to be a lot cleaner and can happen quicker if we just focus on Santa Ana Heights with a separate application, as opposed to there being an application that could be made, you know, by the residents of Country Club and south of Mesa that could go on the same track but be a separate application. So all three aren't tied up with issues that may only be applicable to one or two.
So by the staff recommendation tonight, we're not totally rejecting the possibility that those areas would come into the city at some future date. We're just not pursuing that at this time because of some overriding considerations with regard to West Santa Ana Heights.
I think that's a good way of putting it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a second. Councilmember Daigle had asked for...
I did have a question for Bob Aldrich at LAFCO. Does the LAFCO staff have, what do you believe will be the LAFCO recommendation on the annexation of West Santa Ana Heights?
I'll speak for the commission. Certainly, the commission back in September 2002 opened the door for Newport Beach to consider the annexation of West Santa Ana Heights. As Mr. Kiff indicated, the city of Costa Mesa applied for annexation of all of Area 7. The commission at that time, knowing that Newport Beach, that they had approved the annexation of East Santa Ana Heights, the city of Newport Beach, wanted to give the city the opportunity to at least consider extending services to West Santa Ana Heights. Certainly, if the council chooses to go forward, we will get the application. We'll look at the city's plan for services for West Santa Ana Heights. I can't say at this time definitively what staff's recommendation is going to be. I don't have that authority. But certainly, the commission is open to that.
Thank you.
Mr. Solich, you had a question?
Yeah. I don't know who should answer this, but if the people south of Mesa Drive and the Country Club want to pursue their own annexation, how do they go about doing that? Do they have to have a certain number of people to sign an application, or does somebody just sponsor it, or how does that all work?
You can initiate an annexation in one of two ways, either through a city council resolution, or 5% of the registered voters within the proposed annexation area can sign a petition and file that directly with LAFCO.
Is that regardless, or regardless, irregardless? Not sure. I don't want to be ungrammatical, but of whether they're in the Costa Mesa sphere or the Newport's, well, they're not in the Newport sphere, they're in the Costa Mesa sphere. So if they chose to file an application saying, "We want to go into Newport Beach," is there any reason that they cannot do that?
There is not. They have the right to do that.
So, and at that point, it would be for the LAFCO staff to determine whether or not that was a good idea and whether that should move forward.
We would make a recommendation and forward that to the commission.
And ultimately, the commission would decide whether or not their application would be successful.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I will add that, again, as Mr. Kiff indicated, in September 2002, the commission did approve the annexation of the area south of Mesa and the Country Club to the city of Costa Mesa. That was subsequently terminated through a protest. The commission has not indicated to staff that they have changed their position on those two areas.
But they do have the opportunity to do so.
They certainly do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Curry?
If I could also add, in the case of the Santa Ana Country Club where there are no electors, it's primarily property owners, I presume that they have the same rights of petition for annexation as voters would have.
They do, as a landowner.
And they would be accorded the same considerations by LAFCO as part of that process.
Yes.
Thank you.
Actually, I have one other question.
Mr. Rosanti?
And maybe you can clarify for me, because I've heard several different versions of this, but is there a certain acreage requirement that, let's say Costa Mesa decides that they want to annex it again? Is, I understand that there's a certain requirement that, you know, if it's over a certain amount of acres, they have to have the approval of the residents, otherwise it will not happen. So could you expand on that part of the procedure?
Yeah. The state back in 2000 passed what's called the Small Islands Legislation. Originally, it was 75 acres. It was subsequently expanded 150 acres. Basically, it says if you have an island substantially surrounded by a city, and the city initiates that annexation, it can be annexed, assuming LAFCO approves it, without protest of registered voters or landowners. In the case of Area 7, because in, when the islands legislation was initiated in January 2000, that entire area was much larger, much larger than even 150 acres. Even if subsequent pieces are annexed off, those registered voters and landowners will always have the right to protest.
So even if the remainder, let's call it, of the island even drops below 150 acres, Costa Mesa cannot just unilaterally force them to come into their city?
Correct.
Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
That's very clear. Thank you.
Anybody else, anything else? Mr. Nichols?
We have in our present submental also a change that's going on that hasn't gone through zoning yet on our part, which is the re-establishment of our city yard on the bottom. So that is an additional. Does that complicate this application, in your opinion?
One of the requirements that LAFCO has for a complete application is that the property has to be pre-zoned.
So that would have to be taken account before this application could go forward?
You can certainly initiate the application tonight if that's the desire of the council. We would open up the application, but we would, you know, still be waiting until we could bring it forward to the commission until the property was pre-zoned. I might also add on the corporate yard, that property is currently in the city of Costa Mesa.
Yes, it is owned by them, or I mean, in their boundary.
If it's the desire that it be detached and then annexed to Newport Beach, the city of Costa Mesa has to agree to that. Once an area is in a city, it can't be detached unless you do have the permission of the city of Costa Mesa. Just as a FYI.
I understand our present, the other two properties, the Country Club and south of Mesa, have gone through that zoning. If they were in this resolution, would they, each property be considered separately by LAFCO, dissimilar to the small site that we have further down? In other words, would we be impeding anything on the west of Newport, west of Santa Ana Heights by including these other two in the application?
It may, it may complicate the issues.
Just the same as the corporate yard complicates the issues.
In my opinion, yes.
Bob, could we pull, let's say, the corporate yard issue out of the application at any time if it looked like it was problematic?
You could, yes.
And we would have the same option with these other two if that became problematic, right?
Correct. You have the right to amend your application.
So then, at this point, there's no disadvantage that I see in including those in our application, is there?
And you're, let me just, so I'm clear, you're speaking about the Country Club and south of Mesa.
Right.
If it's a complication, it's that the commission, as of this state, has always supported those two areas remaining in the Costa Mesa sphere.
But the other one takes a vote of Costa Mesa to be turned around anyway.
That's just the service station site. I mean, not the service station site, the city yard site.
Right. But my question is, is if that, if your determination came back that same way, they could be pulled from the application and go through, is my understanding, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I ask you a question while Mr. Aldrich is at the mic?
Sure.
If he could just give us a quick rundown of the process that would be involved if council does move forward with the annexation application of West Santa Ana Heights?
And if you can include in that maybe a little bit of the timeframes involved as well.
Sure. If the council moves forward tonight, you would submit, it would, your staff would prepare a LAFCO annexation application. We would take that along with the initiating resolution. The city would have to do some kind of an environmental analysis. We would also need a property tax exchange, which is a resolution adopted by the Newport Beach City Council, as well as the County of Orange. Assuming the annexation goes through, that would allow, instead of the property taxes accruing to the county, they would be accruing to the city of Newport Beach. Once we have a complete application, the executive officer signs a certificate of filing. That means your application is complete. We would send out the application to interested and affected agencies for comment. We would prepare a staff report and a recommendation, and we would set it for a public hearing before LAFCO. And then we would conduct the public hearing.
About how long does that take?
It's generally four to six months. We have one other requirement that the law has now required of LAFCO. It's called a municipal service review. We're actually going through each of the cities and each of the special districts throughout the county. It's basically, LAFCO is charged with looking at how individual districts and how individual cities provide their services. We may, we have a municipal service review scheduled for Costa Mesa and Newport Beach in the fall. Should your council initiate this annexation, we may move that municipal service review up. Our council has advised us that we may want to complete that municipal service review before taking action on the annexation, but that could be done in the same timeframe.
How long does that take?
Generally, if we get a complete application, it's probably four to six months.
No, I mean, your review of the city?
The MSR, one to two months, but within that four to six month timeframe.
Within that timeframe. Can you expand a little on what criteria you look at when you're considering annexations, as far as whether to go in one city or another?
We look at planned land uses in the area. We look at what services are needed for those land uses. We look at the ability of different service providers to provide those services. And we look at social and economic communities of interest. Those are basically the four factors that the law requires us to look at.
And in the past, I believe in another meeting, you had mentioned that your staff had determined that the Country Club and the area south of Mesa would be best served by the city of Costa Mesa. You've already made that determination.
That's, the commission has made that determination in the past, yes.
Based upon a staff report, staff recommendation?
Correct.
Thank you.
But...
Thank you.
Might that change with the awareness that you have of the vote down that was, like, 70% of the people voted it down, so that the possibility of that taking forth in the future is not particularly good either? So it's sort of a, we're at a headlock here.
Right.
My question is, under those circumstances, might LAFCO also reconsider? And so, a complete application would process virtually all of these on independent paths, is what I'm saying.
Right. Again, I can't speak for the commission, but certainly, they have the ability and the option to do that.
Do that. Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have anything else?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just a question for Mr. Kiff. In addition to the 28 million, do I understand that this redevelopment agency has a remaining debt authority from its original?
Yes, it does, Mr. Curry.
Any idea, ballpark, how much?
No, actually, we haven't come to that number yet with our due diligence.
But in fact, to the extent that the city were to take over this But in fact, to the extent that the city were to take over this area, in addition to the twenty-eight million for immediate improvements, we have the capacity for leveraging the growth and the assessed valuation for potentially much more, in fact, in the community.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosansky.
Dave, could you also just briefly expand on some of the communication that we received from our counterparts of the city of Costa Mesa?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Tamara Rosansky. We did indeed get a letter from the city of Costa Mesa, it was dated February tenth, and basically, they asked that this item not be heard tonight, and that there be additional time to work between the two cities to come to a different conclusion.
If I might add here, that in my meetings with my counterparts at Costa Mesa and the city manager there, along with Councilman Daigle and Mayor Webb, the folks there were pretty much adamantly opposed to annexation of any of the area, so just want to put that out there.
However, they were softer on West Santa Ana Heights.
I don't think so. Maybe you were at a different meeting.
No.
Well, I think they wanted to trade some land, but I don't think they were softer.
Something about that sliver of coastline, but I think with our neighbors, we'll continue to keep the lines of communication open and certainly continue to meet.
My next question was going to be, is there anybody from the city of Costa Mesa that's here tonight that would like to speak? I mean, city of Costa Mesa's city organization. Okay, I see no one. Does the council have their questions asked? Okay, the issue tonight, or item before us tonight, is that our staff has recommended that we go forward with the annexation of West Santa Ana Heights, and so that's the item that we are discussing tonight, and I'm opening this to public testimony.
Robert Hanley, West Santa Ana Heights. As I indicated to you before, we've been at this for six years. We have met with Costa Mesa over a dozen times. We had two major meetings with them, one at their facility and one at the convalescent home in our area. So we explored the possibilities that they offered us, and we basically rejected. Now, I've been hearing the figure of seventy percent. That's South of Mesa. We were ninety-six percent or better. We did everything right. We put in a petition for readjustment of the influence sphere. We paid the fee. We then went around and got another petition, ninety-six percent or better, that basically said we would reject any application by Costa Mesa. One more item. We have a lot of commonality between west and east, and at one time, we had a water company, the Santa Ana Water Company. When I first moved in there, it was very active. The same group I'm talking about, though, got active to make sure that the water company wasn't taken over by Mesa, for the simple reason that we felt the affiliation with that city was too close, and secondly, we got a better deal from the Irvine Water Company, which we're very happy with. But we're not spring chickens at this.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment. I think that it appears that the mood of the council right now is in favor of, I'm not going to try to take anything away, but is in favor of the annexation of the west Santa Ana Heights area, so that if we have new information, you're welcome to come on up.
I'm much shorter than he was. Karen Schaefer, and I am in the South of Mesa group. The South of Mesa group has always identified very closely with the Santa Ana Heights group. We've joined with them in all of their efforts to stop the annexation to the city of Costa Mesa. We put forth a seventy-seven percent vote that we were opposed to this. I've lived in my house about seventy-two feet south of your Area A, and I have been waiting for thirty years for you to annex my house into the city of Newport Beach. Are you telling me that I have to have another vote, another application, more money, and wait another number of years for this action that I really desire? I work in Newport Beach, I shop in Newport Beach, I go to church in Newport Beach, my fire service comes from your fire station. When my former husband died, the paramedics came from the Newport Beach fire station. Tell me where my sphere of influence is, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Hi, I'm Cal McLaughlin, I reside on Redlands Drive in Area Seven, south of Mesa, and I'm probably responsible for the fact that the vote is only seventy-seven percent, because I can add, and I was going for fifty, and we just overshot it, okay, because fifty blocked the annexation. But in fact, the spreadsheet showed an interesting thing. It showed that we also counted the people who favored Costa Mesa, and interestingly enough, there were five percent of the people that favored Costa Mesa. So the edge for Newport Beach is fifteen to one. You don't achieve fifteen to one in American politics without having something very real going on, and the fact of the matter is, is that there is no public service in this area that Newport Beach, that won't be better if we're annexed into Newport Beach than into Costa Mesa. The water district is, the Irvine Ranch Water District is going to stay the same, we could go through all of those, but the sort of summation of the service aspect of it is the fact that the property values are so different in the two cities. Immediately upon annexation into Newport Beach, these property values are going to go up depending on which, who you talk to and what you think, twenty-five to fifty percent. This is a hundred thousand dollars or so of residents. For me, that's a significant amount of money. I can afford to buy any house in the area south of Mesa, and I can afford to buy any house in west Santa Ana Heights. I can't afford to buy any house in east Santa Ana Heights, because there's some of them they wouldn't even let me approach the bank on. But the fact of the matter is, this whole of Area Seven is part of the historic Santa Ana Heights. I want to come back in the few minutes I have remaining to this Cortez-Knox-Hertzberg Act, which set up LAFCO. It really was designed to do several important things, okay, in the post-war period. It came about in the early sixties, and Ray Watson just talked at the fortieth anniversary for UCI, he was president of the Irvine Company, and oversaw the development of the city of Irvine, and he said that this act, which is known by its initials, CKH, was a key to this, because it allowed them to develop the ranch in an orderly fashion, okay, without destroying the agricultural land. If you look through this act, it's now grown to two hundred and thirty-eight pages, but in section after section, three things are protected. The rights of the public, so there are votes required and protests are meaningful, and the rights of the landowners are protected, and the rights of agricultural land not to be rapidly developed. And LAFCO's job is to survey and coordinate all of these things. Basically, we think that you should just go ahead and include all of Area Seven. I don't think it's going to make the negotiation with Costa Mesa any different. I have, I happen to agree with Mr. Rosansky. I've been over at the Costa Mesa City Council, and they were, you know, pounding the desk and saying not one inch was going to go. And yet, the fact is, is that when they first came up with this back in the sixties, there was absolutely no public comment. We didn't even know what was going on, because I've lived in that area for forty years, we did not know what was going on. Notification was a small want ad in the daily pilot, two, one column, two lines, okay? And in both of the key meetings that occurred in sixty-nine and seventy-three at LAFCO, there was a total of four public members came, that's four members of the public came outside of LAFCO. We don't know if they came on Area Seven business, but the fact is, because LAFCO usually considers multiple issues, they gave no public testimony. So the public just didn't know about that. The first time the public knew about this was about six years ago, when Costa Mesa started its drive, and there, we all stood up and we said, look, this is not going to go, this is a no-brainer, and the fact is, is that they didn't believe us. But with fifteen to one, there's no chance this will ever go to Costa Mesa.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Paul Watkins. I'm the chair of the Santa Ana Country Club Annexation Committee. Good evening and happy Valentine's Day. We certainly agree with Dr. McLaughlin that if at all possible, it would be great to have Santa Ana Country Club and South of Mesa added to this west Santa Ana Heights annexation application. We understand, though, that the reality of the situation is that, given political and other circumstances, that may not be appropriate at this time. In the alternative, we respectfully request that you consider an amendment to the draft resolution that would require, at the same time that the west Santa Ana Heights application is filed, a letter from Newport Beach be sent to LAFCO covering at least the following points. Newport Beach has encouraged and supports Santa Ana Country Club and South of Mesa to independently and on their own file with LAFCO an application to change the sphere from Costa Mesa to Newport. Secondly, in that letter, we would ask that Newport Beach indicate that it would not oppose the sphere change. And thirdly, if LAFCO requests Newport Beach to accept the club and south of Mesa based on the change of sphere, Newport Beach would express a willingness to accept both land areas in an effort to accommodate Orange County's desire to rid itself of unincorporated county islands. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Barbara Vannecy, and I'm chairman of the PAC. And let's not lose focus.
Which PAC?
The Santa Ana Heights Redevelopment Agency PAC, the Project Advisory Committee. And I am here on Valentine's Day, on my anniversary, because this is a very important issue to us. And let's not lose track of what's really important here. What's really important here is the movement of this redevelopment agency over to the city of Newport Beach. There's over thirty million dollars worth of projects that are on the table now and have been on the table for the last ten years, that are finally starting to make a movement. The east side and the west side of Santa Ana Heights are all covered under the Santa Ana Heights Redevelopment Agency. The Country Club has its own redevelopment agency, and South of Mesa has never been involved in our redevelopment agency. In order for the county to move that agency to the city of Newport Beach, Supervisor Silva has made it very clear that the west side of Santa Ana Heights needs to be annexed before that can happen. So we've got a lot of stuff on the table here. We've got all these projects, and we've got these west side residents. Now, in 2000, when we first started talking about the annexation, the east side and the west side were going to be annexed by the city of Newport Beach. The Costa Mesa, even though it was that sphere of influence there, our residents on the west side basically brought the Costa Mesa annexation to a halt. That's not going to change. They are never, ever going to be annexed by Costa Mesa, and they can't stay counting. Now, we have two layers of government on PAC to deal with. We have the city layer, and we have the county layer. It makes sense to all be under the city layer, so that we can get these projects moving. The west side residents should have been annexed in 2003 with the east side. It wasn't, because the Country Club joined in that and tagged along with that, and not even, South of Mesa wasn't even part of that at that time. That's when Costa Mesa dug its heels in. They don't want to let the Country Club go, and that's what clouded the issue. And again, tonight, I'm hearing the clouding of the issue. The issue here is the annexation of the west side in conjunction with the takeover of the redevelopment agency. I'm not saying that you shouldn't annex these people later on down the road. I'm sure that the Country Club has enough clout to get themselves annexed at some point, and the people in South of Mesa can do that, too, but it should not, it should not be included in this annexation, or we will be back here in the next two, three, five years, still arguing over this, and we still will have the same erratic crap that's going on right now. So let's cut to the chase, let's annex these people, and let's move on with business. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on this? If you would like to talk, why don't you come on down front, so that we can just have a shorter timeframe in between?
Yeah, my name is Herbert Hiroshima, I'm south of Mesa Drive, anyway, and we had a vote, and, you know, it's going to be the same vote all over again, we have to go through this again, and one of the reasons, one of the things, well, the big reason why I like to be part of Santa Ana, I mean, part of Newport Beach now, is because what I had told one of your staff managers, and he knows me by sight now, he remembers me, that you guys led the fight against the expansion of the airport, and I want to formally be recognized by you people now, and be formally represented by you people now, and let's get this thing over with, and let's be part of you guys.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Janet Hiroshima, and I'm also on the south side of Mesa, and I think that LAFCO, as well as Costa Mesa, is not hearing the citizens. We do not want to be a part of Costa Mesa, we want to be a part of Newport Beach, and I'd like the nonsense to end. Thank you.
Seeing nobody else, let me close the public hearing, and council, what is your desire?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Rosansky?
Okay, we've heard a lot of testimony tonight, and we've gotten a lot of good information, I think, from our representative here from LAFCO, from our city staff. I agree with what Ms. Vannecy said earlier, we do need to move forward with the annexation of west Santa Ana Heights to unify those two neighborhoods and bring the redevelopment agency together under one roof. We do have a lot of important projects going on in that area, which I know Councilman Daigle's been working very diligently on, and we need to continue that progress. I do, I do have some sympathy, though, for the residents there, south of Mesa, as well as the Country Club members, which I believe many, if not most, are residents of Newport Beach, as far as their objective to be annexed to the city. So I will make a motion that we do adopt this resolution as proposed by the staff. However, I would like to add to the motion that our application, when it does go to LAFCO, include a letter, a cover letter, that will be attached by the city manager that will recognize the fact that we are only requesting annexation of the areas mentioned in the resolution. However, we would be receptive to entertaining or cooperating with an application by the residents south of Mesa, as well as the Country Club, should they desire to pursue that with LAFCO and present their own application for annexation to the city, and that we would hopefully look favorably on that application, should they decide to do that. But in the interests of expediency here and getting this thing moving, I think we need to go forward with the resolution as drafted.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments? There's one technicality on the south of Mesa, and how far south of Mesa are you talking about? Are you talking about down to University Drive? Or are you talking about the full purple area?
I'm talking about the unincorporated areas as they exist now, so I would imagine that would be the full purple area. And if I may add also to my motion, that the letter be subject, or be reviewed by at least one, if not two, council members, I'll propose myself, as well as Councilman Daigle, before the letter goes out with the application, as to being approved, as to form and content.
Anybody else wish to make a comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Nichols?
I assume that that motion of yours has a second?
I assume that that motion of yours has a second, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I frankly would like to see the whole thing go, but this is a fallback. And I believe that this goes through smoothly. It can be bifurcated, so it can be separated, and it would, we have the ability to do what we want. We already are proposing, in this motion, other things have to be done. We have to rezone the parcel that we want to break away from Costa Mesa. That has to be okayed by them. That's going to slow that up if this is in the same motion. So, I do not see that the other cannot be equally well-decided on at this point. And if it breaks out because of a time sequence, the same as the city yard, so be it, and the people can do what they need to do to revive it as a separate path, or we could break it as a separate path and let it go at that point. So, I would like, as an alternate, to put that forth, if I can get a second.
Are you making a motion?
I would make a motion that we include all properties in the initial application.
Is there a second? Hearing none. That motion fails to get a second. I guess the concern that I had, and the reason why I asked the question related to the south of Mesa, is that usually cities try to come up with relatively logical boundaries. And if you look at the map up there, you're going to have little islands of Costa Mesa sticking into Newport, and it's going to be very difficult to really have a feel back and forth. So, I support the first part of the motion, as far as the letter of considering South Santa Ana Heights is concerned. I think I'd like to see if we can have a separate motion on whether or not we feel that South of Mesa should go south of University Drive, Del Mar, I'm not sure what the name of that street is, just to make a logical city boundary, so that you don't have bits and pieces of cities next to each other. Does anybody have a comment on that? Or am I the only one that's concerned about this?
Personally, you know, I don't want to sit here and pass judgment on who belongs into the city or not. If the folks south of University feel it's in their best interest to be in Costa Mesa, then obviously they wouldn't want to join in that application. And so, I would say, just let's leave that to another day. We're not looking at annexation of either of those areas in our application, and so there's no point in parsing it up and parceling it up at this date and time. We can address that certainly when and if the application is presented, and we are asked at that point in time to annex those areas.
As long as the council recognizes that that's to receive further discussion at a later date, then I can support your motion.
Well, I think there's no doubt that it would have to come back to us, because we would have to accede in the request to annex that area. I don't think it just happens because the residents would want it, or even LAFCO would want it. So, I think we'll most certainly see that back here, and we can leave that discussion for another day.
Okay, Mr. Nichols?
And the squaring up of the boundary, that was part of your emotion?
No, actually, that's something that's part of a letter that would be sent, as far as, and we will discuss that further at a later date.
Right.
So, are you withdrawing your motion, then?
Me?
Yes.
No, that wasn't a motion.
It was not a motion. Great. Thank you.
I think part of our political consideration is really to, you know, avoid a Donnybrook or a public squabble with our neighbors, so that's really of Costa Mesa. But I think, too, that our city recognizes that LAFCO is an independent commission of elected officials, and if in their judgment, should they determine that the Country Club and the other areas can be in Newport Beach, we would certainly accept and welcome those people. So, although we are filing our application for West Santa Ana Heights, and we really have a lot riding on this in terms of our redevelopment monies, airport, and so on, that if in the future LAFCO were to, if this board of elected officials were to rule that, we would certainly welcome those areas into our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sellige.
Yeah, just one thing I'm still not quite clear on. If we go through with this annexation, do we have all of the redevelopment agency in the city, then?
With the exception of the airport.
The airport.
I think there is a little sliver that is in Costa Mesa's city right now. Isn't that along the South Bristol, Dave?
That's right. It's roughly Santa Ana and Bristol. It's the corner, there's a barber shop there, I think a gas station. That would be the one sliver that's in Costa Mesa today. And then, as the city manager mentioned, all of John Wayne Airport would remain outside. That's not in anyone's sphere of influence.
So, why is, I guess I'm a little bit confused, and why is it's, I mean, the main reason for taking it in this form is because of the redevelopment agency, but if so much of the redevelopment agency is still going to be outside the city, why is this so important? Does this put us over a certain percentage of the land area or something, or what?
Well, it isn't important for the redevelopment agency to have John Wayne as a part of the city, because we have no jurisdiction over John Wayne, anyway. But John Wayne is an important part of the redevelopment agency because it spends all forty-eight percent of the property tax increment that is used to finance projects.
No, I understand that. My question was reversed. Why is it so important to have this piece, the piece we're annexing for the redevelopment agency? I guess some...
Is there any direction in the redevelopment agency that the money, where the money has to be spent? I mean, is it supposed to be, can it be spent on the airport? Let's put it that way.
It cannot be spent on the airport. The redevelopment plan does not allow the money to be spent on the airport. It has to be spent in the project area, or if it is spent outside of the project area, it has to be spent on projects that benefit directly the project.
So, by annexing the West Santa Ana Heights, we will virtually annex the entire project area where the money can be spent?
I think ninety-nine percent. And also, in our discussions with Supervisor Silva, I mean, it was almost like, you know, he's willing to go to bat for us taking over the redevelopment agency if we annex West Santa Ana Heights.
Certainly, we've asked the county to annex the airport, but unfortunately, they're not as cooperative as we would like them to be.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Currie.
I am persuaded that the importance of moving forward with the redevelopment agency and getting the two parts of Santa Ana Heights connected really compel us to take the actions outlined today by staff. But in the absence of that driving force, you know, I would otherwise have been supportive of Mr. Nichols' motion. And I certainly support this letter. I look forward to welcoming West Santa Ana Heights into the Newport Beach family, and I ultimately look forward to welcoming South of Mesa and the Country Club into the Newport Beach family, because I think that ultimately is going to be the result. I certainly hope that LAFCO will give heed to the will of the people, as it's been expressed, I think, most definitively in that community and by the property owners at the Santa Ana Country Club. I certainly hope that our friends and colleagues in Costa Mesa will also adhere to the will of the people and recognize the will of the people as they take their deliberations going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote on this? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the ordinance in formation of the Newport Beach-Santa Ana Heights Redevelopment Agency.
I was supposed to call your colleague.
Colleague, come back.
Yeah, I read that.
I figure if you weren't asleep in the back room, you'd come anyway.
I'll tell you what it says. You don't have to read it.
Okay, Mr. Kiff, did you have an additional map for us to show what our proposed redevelopment agency's resolution is encompassing?
I do have a map, Mr. Mayor. However, the question you asked is a little different from what's described on the map. Remember that in our action to propose to form a redevelopment agency... Wait a little bit, maybe to...
We've got to calm down here.
It's a very exciting time.
Mr. Sellige.
You printed it backwards.
Flip it over. No, it's sideways, because it fits on the map that way.
No, this, the line, it's all backwards.
That's what happens when you do stuff at 5:30 before a council meeting.
Oh, no, I guess not.
It's just fine print. I actually will have it, I can put up on the screen if you'd like. Again, the mayor asked the question, do we have a proposed boundary for our redevelopment agency? And actually, the agency applies citywide. It's the project areas that are identified by a map, and we're proposing mirroring the Santa Ana Heights project area.
Okay.
So, remember, each agency, for instance, the county's agency today has fourteen different project areas, one of which is Santa Ana Heights. So, the city would have an agency that has a jurisdiction across Newport Beach. However, we would have no redevelopment authority except in a designated project area.
So, we have to come back with a separate resolution designating a project area later on?
Actually, we do have John Getz here, I believe, with Stradling, and John is our counsel on that. John can answer that question better than I can. And there he is.
Yeah, thanks. What you're being asked to do here tonight is consider an ordinance that would just establish the redevelopment agency itself. It would require a separate ordinance of the city council at a later time to actually adopt the redevelopment project. And in order to do that, it will be necessary to enter into an agreement between the city's redevelopment agency and the county's redevelopment agency, which will establish agreement on a lot of different areas of dividing up the tax increment and responsibilities for administration of the redevelopment project. So, those particular items are not before you tonight and would happen at a later time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody, any other staff report information you need to have? Does anybody in the audience wish to comment on this? Mr. Mayor, maybe it would be good to have Mr. Getz talk about what kind of timeframe is involved from the first step tonight to the formation of the agency. Okay, Mr. Getz, could you, or Mr. Piff, how do we work this out?
Yeah, I think I'm going to ask for Dave's help on this, too. But the formation of the agency is just the simple step of passing the ordinance. So, you'd be looking at first reading of the ordinance tonight and the second reading and passage at your next meeting. Maybe you can comment on the timing of the ordinance adopting the redevelopment project.
As I understand that, that will be contingent upon our completion of an agreement with the, over the spheres issues, and I might punt that to Homer, because Homer's closer to the timing on that than I am.
It's my understanding that we can take the legal actions to form the agency and adopt the redevelopment plan, and that process is roughly the same as annexation, four to six months. We expected that, our discussions with the county, of which I had some more today, that there's a good likelihood that we will be bringing actions back to the city council and the Board of Supervisors next month. Okay, good. Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions? Mr. Nichols?
Just one of explanationer, I'm not sure I understand, kind of thing. We're setting up a separate agency by just written agency now that would allow the transfer of the county agency to that, per se, for the expenditure of funds and the taxes and so forth and so on.
The county can't transfer their redevelopment agency to us. We have to form our own agency, and then the county, we would enter into an agreement with the county as to whether they would retain any responsibilities that are responsible for now with the agency, and which responsibilities and the money that we would get.
So, that's still up for grab, well, not grabs, but that would still be up for discussions on, in other words, they might take the taxes, they have to pull out the bankruptcy funds, they have to pull out their housing allowances. Then, the remainder of that, that was to be used in the area, would be given to the separate agencies supposedly for spending on the projects that might be co-sponsored or co-allowed or whatever.
That's actually a very good description, Councilman Nichols, that to where, what would happen is, we would just step in the shoes of the county in terms of providing the projects and taking the money that is going to be earmarked for projects. But there are some expenditures, debt service, there is bankruptcy debt, housing set aside money, and some administration that the county would continue to take. But we would, they would also transfer the money that is earmarked for projects over to us.
And that money would be the basis of our...
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Rosansky?
Yes, I'd just like to say, I'd like to move the axon.
Mayor Webb, I'm sorry to interrupt. We do have one recommended change to the resolution before you consider adopting that. I have that on the screen. It's what is, in effect, the last whereas. And I propose the addition of a couple of words, and actually, Mayor Webb pointed this out to me, the sentence itself didn't quite make sense, so now it does. So, it would read, "A portion of the Santa Ana Heights Redevelopment Project Areas, Obligations, and Administration," because we just left it at project before.
Okay, your motion includes that revised wording, right?
Yes, it does.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Does anybody in the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one, don't hesitate. Okay, we will move forward. Does the council have any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Is anybody in the audience here to talk about the Newport Beach response to ongoing residential development in the Irvine Business Complex? I'd like to ask if we can move item seventeen before item sixteen, because we have some staff members that are sticking around for this, and we may get into a little bit of discussion on the Irvine complex. Does anybody have objections to that?
No.
All right, item seventeen. Sorry. Oh, thank you, LAFCO. I'm sorry.
LAFCO has left the building.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. I'm Janet Johnson Brown, Assistant Planner in the Planning Department. Sprint has filed an application to modify or alter their existing...
Hold on one second, Janet. Lynn, can you close the doors?
The application filed by Sprint is for, to request approval for alterations to their existing facility, which is located at 20662 Newport Post Drive. The project site's zoned open space passive and is in the twenty-four-foot, twenty-eight-foot height limitation zone. It's developed with the laid-out gas recovery facility, and there are also three other wireless telecom facilities on site. Special review and approval is required by city council when antennas are proposed to be installed at a height greater than fifteen feet above the upper maximum height limit allowed by the zoning code. In this case, Sprint is requesting to modify their facility and place two new antennas at forty-three feet above grade. The antennas would be placed on the smokestack that's existing on the gas recovery facility. In order for council to approve an application, there are two findings that need to be made. The first finding is that the approval is necessary to allow the facility to function as intended, and identified alternatives to the proposal are not feasible. Sprint states that the facility is experiencing dropped or blocked calls because of interference from the tall trees that are surrounding the site. The applicant has explored moving the existing facility to a different location, including the Sage Hill School or an SCE Transmission Tower on the west side of the San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor. The school officials declined their request, and the SEC site was determined to be contaminated due to its proximity to the landfill site. due to its proximity to the landfill site. Relocating the facility to a different location in the surrounding undeveloped area wouldn't meet the intent of the telecom ordinance because the ordinance encourages the co-location of wireless facilities to limit the proliferation of facilities in the city, and it encourages the location of facilities in an area where adverse impacts on the community would be minimized. In this case, it appears that the most viable solution would be to place the new antennas higher up on the smokestack from their existing location. The second finding is the approved facility will not result in conditions which are material detrimental to nearby property owners, residents, and businesses, or to public health and safety. The applicant's requesting to reduce the total number of antennas on their facility from 12 antennas to six. There are no other changes proposed with the application, and the facility has operated at this location for the past four years without detriment to the community. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Dagel?
What is staff's recommendation for approval?
Staff recommends approval.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Let's not fight, gentlemen. Are there any questions?
Just if I could, has there been any comments, letters from the community on this issue at all?
No, nothing was received at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, closed public hearing. Discussion by council? Please vote.
Thank you, Janet.
Motion, Currys.
Let's go back to item 16 now. Okay, this is an item on the Newport Beach response to ongoing residential development in the Irvine Business Complex. Who's gonna give their quote on this? Sharon?
I'll start, and then the city attorney will follow after I give you some, review some of the background. The City of Irvine in 1992 adopted general plan and zoning provisions for the Irvine Business Complex, which we keep referring to as IBC. And that was based on a program EIR that they did in 1988 that we call the '88 EIR. And a couple of the things that zoning and general plan established was a trip budget for the number of automobile trips that couldn't be exceeded for uses. The plan also provided for transfer of development rights between properties within the IBC as long as the trip budget wasn't exceeded. And it established a cap of 3,896 dwelling units. And with those provisions and others, that EIR also found that there were some significant unavoidable environmental impacts that could not be mitigated. And among those areas were traffic and recreation. Since the approval of that general plan and zoning in 1992, there have been numerous projects that have transferred development rights within the IBC. And there also have been general plan amendments to increase that residential cap, so that today, as of December 2005, the Irvine general plan allows 8,734 residential units, so that's an increase of over 5,000. And they also have applications pending for over another 5,000 residential units. And the City of Irvine has approved all of these applications, in most cases with addenda to the 1988 EIR. And that is a shortened form of environmental review. And a really important feature is that it does not require public review. So in many of the cases, the City of Newport Beach was not aware that these projects were occurring, and we were not having an opportunity to review the environmental documents. Beginning in January of 2004, we did start to review some of their documents. It was the Shoalie Proposal was the first one that we really paid attention to, because it was right at our border at Jamboree and Fairchild, and it involved a transfer of development rights for an office project. And our Environmental Quality Affairs Committee prepared extensive comments on that environmental document, which the city council approved and sent to the City of Irvine. It was at that time that the city council formed the Newport Beach-Irvine Borders Committee, and the City of Irvine also participated in that. And through that effort and negotiating with the applicants, Newport Beach was able to reach an agreement with the Shoalie property owner to provide the City Newport Beach with nearly $400,000 for traffic improvements to help with impacts from that project. And we also commented on another supplemental EIR that was done for the Central Park Project, which is at Jamboree and Michelson. It's a mixed-use project and includes about 1,300 residential units. And there has been one other meeting of the Borders Committee, which really just had some more general conversation and updates between the two cities. Beginning in late 2003, the City of Irvine began working on a comprehensive plan for residential development in the IBC. And we have followed that for a time and attended some of their study sessions and planning commission and council meetings. And whenever I have spoken on behalf of Newport Beach, I have always said, "We are not trying to tell you how to plan your community. Newport Beach is merely requesting that you do environmental review of this plan." So now they have released their environmental review of what they're calling a zoning overlay, and they are proposing to adopt that ordinance as well as, we believe, a vision for the IBC. The negative declaration isn't clear, with a negative declaration without any significant impacts identified and therefore without any mitigation measures proposed. And they also did a fairly short review period on this. They did not consider it to be of area-wide or regional significance, so there was only a 20-day public review period instead of 30 days, which we would have thought would be more appropriate. And so comments on that document are due this Thursday, February 16. And I think with that background, I'll ask the city attorney to talk about our response.
Okay. About the same time as, I think Sharon Wood's been working over the last few years with all these various issues that have come up with regards to the transfer of development rights and the residential uses that are being approved by general plan amendments, she also gathered up information about all future general plan amendments. And there's potentially over 5,000 units in the hopper right now for approval pursuant to a general plan amendment and with the intent of using a supplemental EIR. About the same time, Councilmember Dagel mentioned that she was concerned that the city was taking action as to writing these letters, but without a follow-through, and I think most of you know that if there's no follow-through with a letter criticizing the way the environmental has been handled, then the public agency is free to go ahead and approve it. And if there's no challenge to it, then the environmental document, even if it's inadequate, passes muster without any formal challenge. So the recommendation was for us to hire an outside legal counsel to assist with writing these letters and to do it in a way where we come back to the council with a policy statement that not only should the letters be written, but we should give notice to the City of Irvine that we intend to follow through on the letters to the extent that there is inadequacies in their environmental review. The first item that came up, that it became very obvious that the environmental review was inadequate, is the negative declaration that they are proposing for the overlay district. That negative declaration, in my opinion, and Sharon and I spent quite a bit of time looking through the overlay district and what they call a vision, and it is completely inadequate. Any reliance on the prior EIR is not adequate. And there is really very little study to tell us about the impacts of the proposed overlay district, which admittedly is to promote the potential development of 10,000 residential units in the Irvine Business Complex. With that timing, I felt it necessary to go ahead and have hired a firm to assist us with drafting the letter, because we didn't have enough time to get the letter drafted and everything done in time for this February 16 review period deadline that we had. So that is in the works with regards to the overlay. But I still think it would be important for the council to authorize us to continue to work with outside council as economically as possible, so that staff is doing as much work as we can. But to also send the direction to staff to have council inform the City of Irvine that we intend to follow through on making sure that the environmental review on these projects is done appropriately.
Thank you.
Excuse me, one more piece of sort of background that I did not mention relates to the city attorney's comments. I've recently responded to two notices of preparation for supplemental EIRs on two residential projects in the IBC. So we will shortly be receiving those draft EIRs and have an opportunity to comment on those individual projects.
Good. Just to put this in perspective, if you look at traffic generation rates, a residential unit such as this is supposed to generate someplace between six and eight trips. And so that's someplace between 30,000 and 40,000 trips of traffic in the area.
Well, to really put it in perspective, originally, under the 1992 EIR, they only showed about 32,000, 3,400 residential units. And they've added 5,000 to that 3,400. So they're already at 8,400, and they're adding 5,000 more units. And the original intent was just to transfer the traffic generation from the transferred commercial to residential, but they far exceeded that. I'd like to make a couple of comments, and then I'll defer to Councilman Dagel if she'd like to make the motion. But that is, I have talked with Lou Bone, the last year's mayor for the City of Tustin, and Doug Davert, who's on a committee of mine, who is the current mayor of Tustin. Tustin basically fights everything the Irvine Company does. It's...Pardon me?
The company or City of Irvine?
I mean, the City of Irvine. I'm sorry. That's good. Thank you. I knew I said something wrong. Anyhow, City of Irvine. And they literally fight tooth and nail on everything. I guess it's time to say no more Mr. Nice Guy. I think this council is a different council than a few years ago. We tolerated, we didn't know the significance of what they were doing because actually we weren't getting notices. But now we know the significance of what they're doing. And again, I think we need to not only write these letters, but clearly file lawsuits and force them into full EIRs and mitigation. And that mitigation should include the City of Newport Beach. An observation, the Shoalie Project at the corner of Jamboree and MacArthur was clearly, is about 100 yards from that intersection. And the addenda, I believe it was an addenda, to an EIR showed that there was no impact in the City of Newport Beach for this 400,000-square-foot building, less than 100 yards to that intersection. That is incomprehensible to me. Incomprehensible. At the end of the day, we negotiated directly with Shoalie, and we got $400,000 toward improvements for the widening of the bridge at Jamboree. And obviously, there are significant impacts. So that just shows you how egregious these activities have been. So with that, I make my comments.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, but I'd also point out that Councilman Ridgeway was also in on these discussions when he was on Borders. And then more recently, Councilman Selich has been involved with this. So both have been, appear to be supportive in going forward with this approach. From my perspective, California has environmental laws to protect our quality of life, and government also has to follow the law. I have some questions for the city attorney. When I was looking at the draft correspondence in number five, my question deals with, it's difficult to make heads or tails in terms of how many units that they're proposing in Irvine, and it seems to be piecemealing the number of units and piecemealing the documents. Do you think that they've adequately described their project?
No. I agree with you. That is our number, one of our biggest concern is that all of these individual general plan amendments are being done on a piecemeal basis with inadequate environmental review. And then the overlay itself, with the negative declaration, is a form of continuing the prohibition in sequo against piecemealing projects. What they need to do is an overall review of the entire area and the impacts of all these changes.
Okay. And then in terms of their scoping being perhaps insufficient, their conclusion about no significant impact, what are your thoughts on that?
My thoughts are that the initial study was in almost what they call a superficial, checking off of the boxes.
I would like to move this action as recommended by my staff. And it also includes that we continue the Irvine Borders Committee. We certainly want to continue the dialogue with the City of Irvine as well. And we're not, this evening, approving litigation. These letters would be more precursor to any litigation.
Second. Is there any discussion from the public? Seeing none, is there any further discussion from the city council? Please vote.
Motion, Currys.
Okay, the next item that we consider is item three. It was pulled by Councilmember Nichols. It has to do with the second reading of the sea lion-related ordinances. Mr. Nichols, what were your comments?
My comment has to do with the fact that the sea lions, well, I'm not exactly sure how they pick their sites that they're doing their drafting on. But my question is, is that we're turning over to citizens the responsibility of removing these beasts. And my question is, is they're really partially a problem that's semi-related to how we're running things as well. And my question is, is maybe we should have some responsibility in this regard as well. Should we, if we have an attack of sea lions on a particular craft that's not out of line, is it worthwhile to go out there with the fire hose and see whether we can get them to move with the owners okay before we start saying to the owner, "Well, we don't know exactly what you can do, but you can't shoot them with a gun, and you gotta get them off. And if they come back, you gotta put a fence around that thing. And it's gonna be a very big fence, because they're 1,000-pound beasts." So I just think we maybe need to reconsider whether it's all the...
Mr. Nichols, are you requesting that we reconsider this ordinance? Because right now, we've already approved the ordinance, and this is the second reading. And we can't really discuss the details. But if you have specific changes that you feel are necessary, you can propose, I mean, you can ask us to reconsider the ordinance.
Voted for it the first time, did you?
I don't remember. If I didn't vote for it, I would be unable to bring this, other than as a discussion item. I wouldn't be able to bring it further. My feeling is, is that we're maybe asking citizens to do too much here. And that's my comment.
Mr. Mayor...
Mr. Attorney, city attorney. City Attorney.
I think that this is a second reading, and it's a motion, the motion would be for adoption of the ordinance, and then it would become effective within 30 days. To the extent that Councilmember Nichols is proposing changes or otherwise via a motion to amend it, it would need to be reintroduced.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the second reading, and then I have a comment.
Second.
Mr. Ridgway, you had a comment?
Well, let's wait and talk to this. I'm trying to read the minutes, and I can't see where the voting is in the minutes. That's my question.
Okay, let's open this up to the public. Is there somebody in the public that would like to discuss this item? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Is there further discussion by the city council before we vote? All right, let's vote.
Councilmember Nichols abstaining. The motion, Currys.
Okay, city clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with...
with the prevailing side.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mr. Nichols, gentleman? Mr. Nichols?
I'm sorry. The question is, is on that sober living. Did that come out of, did that come out of the planning commission as a pass?
No, the, there was a motion to approve at the planning commission, but it failed on a 3-3 tie.
Okay, so they're appealing it.
Applicant has filed an appeal.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
And just a note, Mr. Nichols, you did vote for the sea lion ordinance last time.
So I have a right.
You do.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not sure it would have passed, I don't think you have three votes, but.
No, I.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.